First item is pledges of allegiance. Please stand with me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible. Okay, there are a number of items on the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from last time. Case file number 2025-08P. Case file number 2025-30P. Case file number 2024-41P in ETJ. Case file number 2025-07Z. And case file number 2025-01SUP. These are not for public discussion, these are consent. Is there among the commission a motion or?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion for second, have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, well, don't we now join by our newest member?
Hey, you're our newest, pardon my.
Okay. We're now on. Number miscellaneous, no, public hearings, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. I think I went too far in the presentation. Public hearing on, sorry. Case file number 2025-07Z. Now that is a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
And on this one, at the conclusion of the presentation, anyone in the public which you speak in favor of or in opposition of this matter and next matter may do so.
Um, you would need to read the caption and then, um.
Okay, I will.
Okay.
Okay, now first one is case file number 2025-07Z. This is a public hearing to consider approval of a request of J.D. Elsner Holdings LLC for a zone change from future development to light industrial. This is on Lot 5, Block 1, Oil Patch Edition, being 11.32 acres in the city of Odessa, Ector County, generally located on the north side of East Murphy Street. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commission members. The applicant is J.D. Elsner Holdings LLC as requesting a zone change from future development to Light Industrial Zoning District on Lot 5, Block 1, Oil Patch Edition, being an 11.32 acre tract of land in the city of Odessa, Ector County, Texas. There were two notices sent, zero returns, zero approvals, and zero protests. The property involved in this request is located on the north side of East Murphy, approximately 500 feet east of Market Avenue, Council District 1. The site is on Future Development District and contains light industrial development on the lot. The applicant is J.D. Elsner Holdings LLC, and the purpose of this zone change request is for the consideration of the implementation of workforce housing on the lot. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the city of Odessa's comprehensive plan to evaluate zoning amendments, the following comments are offered. Comprehensiveness, this request, this request is compatible with the city of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is located near Light Industrial, Industrial Zoning District and has a zoning and a zo, I'm sorry, let me repeat that. This request is compatible with the city of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is located near Light Industrial District zoning and associated uses. With approval of a specific use permit, the proposed workforce housing is permitted use in Light Industrial District zoning. The proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on the site or surrounding properties, and the proposed development is not out of line with development in the area. For reasonableness, the proposed zoning district will facilitate a reasonable transition between land uses of varying intensities and will not create a conflict to the existing land uses in the area. This is actually, this case that I'm presenting right now for zoning is actually for a proposed workforce, workforce use in this area. Okay? This is the zoning they had to zone in first, that's why I'm presenting the zoning. I would like to draw your attention to one of the maps on the agenda. One of the maps contains a caption that indicates that S.W. Howell was the agent for this case, however, that is incorrect. The correct presenter is J.D. Holding, J.D. Elsner Holdings LLC. And based upon the preceding analysis, staff recommends approval of the request, subject to condition A, to adhere to Light Industrial Zoning District standards. And I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions of staff? Hearing, no comments or questions about the staff. I would note again, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience today that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this matter, now would be the time to come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public portion of this hearing, turn to commission for discussion or a motion.
I have one question, and I'm not sure whether it's for this case or for the next case. What type of construction is the workforce housing?
Okay, workforce housing would be trailers, but we would discuss it in the other SUP case.
Any other comments or a motion?
Make a motion, we approve this for Senate.
Have a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, going on to the next case file number, that being 2025-01SUP. This is a public hearing to consider a request by J.D. Elsner Holdings LLC for a specific use permit for workforce housing on Lot 5, Block 1, Oil Patch Edition. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commission members. There were two notices sent, zero returns, zero approvals, and zero protests. The applicant, J.D. Elsner Holdings, is requesting a specific use permit to allow workforce housing in a light industrial district. The currently designated, this is currently designated Future Development District with a request for an associated zone change to Light Industrial District to facilitate approval of the specific use permit. A site plan has been submitted by the applicant showing the proposed four portable buildings and associated parking. The proposed workforce housing requires nine parking spaces and 24 parking spaces have been provided in compliance. Access will be to the homes in parking area, access will be provided to the homes and parking area and an existing access along East Murphy Street. The city of Odessa, I'm sorry. Therefore, staff recommends approval of a specific use permit for workforce housing, subject to the conditions listed A through P. Did you need me to go ahead and, and indicate those?
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Okay. For A, approval of the SUP is contingent upon zoning approval. B, access and parking for the site will be, will need to be provided per the attached site plan. Vehicles in not remote condition may not be stored on site. D, operation of a home occupation or home business by occupants of workforce housing shall not be allowed. Occupancy shall be limited to two persons per bedroom at the same time. For F, one parking space per occupant and each required parking space shall be paved and will, it will be required to be nine foot by 18. Access to proposed workforce housing will be provided on East Murphy Street. All portions of the buildings must be within 150 feet of an approved fire apparatus road. There must be a fire hydrant within 400 feet of buildings. All applicable building codes need to be met. Review of the permit upon receiving neighborhood complaints. This is a temporary permit, and the city council should have the right of termination for violation of the terms and conditions of the permit or because of the negative effect of the use on the neighborhood and a public hearing, after a public hearing. A workforce housing site, a site shall remain an office building in which the office of the person in charge of said workforce housing shall be located. The workforce housing register shall be kept in such, such office at all times. They shall comply to the city of Odessa zoning ordinance, Chapter 14, zoning, Article 14-2, Section 14-2-7, GHIJKLM, workforce housing regulations. Compliance with the law. All workforce housing must be in compliance with all applicable statutes of the state of Texas, rules and regulations of Ector County, and any other ordinances of the city of Odessa. Approval of the site plan and workforce regulation is indicated in Exhibits A and B, and that the workforce housing shall be allowed from May 27th, which is the final city council date, that's the second reading, to May 27, 2030. That allows for five years. This is an approval of up to five years. Upon termination of five years, the applicant will need to resubmit a specific use permit request. And I'm here for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions of staff? The attached regulations from Chapter 14, covering zones.
Yes, sir.
That's already in effect.
That's already, those are, yes, those are under the zoning ordinance, and we can find them there. We had to shorten it a little, but yes, those are also requirements for the specific use permit.
So they're acknowledging that they have to abide by that set of regulations?
Correct, yes, sir.
Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, then I will turn to the public and ask if there's anyone here today that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition of this specific matter. If there's no one wishing to come forward at this time, then I will close the public portion, turn to commission, and ask for any discussion or a motion.
Okay, here's my deal. We're, we're looking at abandoned mobile homes, but in this deal here, we're saying that's approved, the mobile homes, so are we contradicting ourselves?
Would you like to open the public hearing once again, sir? Because I have the, the.
Okay.
I have the person that can speak in regards to.
Okay, then. Do you have a motion that we reopen public portion?
So move.
Second, anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're now reopened for discussion on this matter. And Mr. Commissioner has a question, and somebody can answer that for us.
So, the gentleman hasn't arrived yet, and I apologize. But this actually is, they're not mobile homes, they're strictly buildings that will be placed there, there will be, there will be units that will be placed there for this type of housing. Now, he has not indicated if they are actual mobile home types or constructed types of buildings. This is something that we do need to reach out to him, we have reached out to him several times. He was supposed to provide us also a more specific site plan. From what we know, what we gathered, these are just actual units. I don't know what the actual type of materials he will be using for them. But as the conditions indicated, they are allowed for five years. If he doesn't comply, or if, if for any reason they are abandoned, anybody coming into that same property will have to renew the specific use permit under their name.
I guess, I guess I'm still a little bit concerned, you know. I would like to be more specific before I move ahead and say yea or nay on this.
Okay.
You know. When you say units, to me, that still could be a modular mobile home or whatever, and I'm not trying to be hard to get on with, I just, I just want more definiteness.
Yes, and we were given just very limited information. We did try to, like I said, we did try to reach out to, to the gentleman, he didn't provide much of information. He, he did mention he was working all the time, so that's probably why he hasn't made it to this meeting. But I can, we can definitely, either you have a choice, you can deny or table or this, this case.
Well, they're bound to be mobile homes or modulars at best, I mean, they're not going to site-built out there, I wouldn't think.
We can, what we can do is, we can direct to, to legal for an opinion between now and council to see if there's any discrepancies there, but our position would be for now. That's a very good point. The difference between mobile homes for, for permanent residential living and then for workforce housing where they're only going to be there on a temporary basis would be a different subset. So you're correct in terms of the structure type, but I think it's okay because it's, it's part of workforce housing and not traditional living. But we can definitely get a, an opinion on that between, so even if you recommended yes, it would still have to go to council, so between now and council, we could check on that and make sure.
I would like to see something like that. Temporary in my line of work is six months, it's not five years. Five years in my line of work is pretty permanent, so.
Sure, sure.
And I'd hate to vote against the person that signed me to this committee on some mobile homes and knowing how his stance feels on mobile homes or whatever. I'm not against workforce housing, I understand what he thinks, but.
Sure. But I think the difference would be, what, what council was trying to do, right, is they would, they were trying to prevent mobile homes for permanent, like for, in a residential subdivision, from being next to single-family homes in a residential subdivision. So with workforce housing, they're generally on larger sites and they're sort of self-contained. So I guess what it is, is it's, it could be a mobile structure, or it may not be, but it's, it's for a different classification than, say, in a, in a subdivision. I think that's what, but in hindsight, I think we, we probably could get a, a second opinion on that, just to make sure between now and, and council, but it's, it's really up to you all.
I would make the motion to table.
Okay, this is still public hearing.
We can.
Anyone else in the audience at this time would like to come forward? Are there any other questions of staff? No other questions of staff, no one in the public coming forward at this time, I will reclose the public portion of the, this matter and turn to the commission for discussion or a motion.
And discussion. If not, I, I would make a motion to table, get more information, at least from the owner.
Have a motion to table, is there a second?
A second.
A motion to table, all, in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This matter is tabled. All right. Now into our miscellaneous categories, we're starting.
Before, I'm sorry, before we continue, there is one more public hearing, and that is.
Which one is that?
Thirty-six, thirty-seven.
Thirteen.
It is actually 2025-37P, Normandy Heights. I would like to make an amendment because this was incorrectly placed in the miscellaneous
Yeah, it looks like there are one or, there's.
There are three.
Three in a row.
Yes.
That say, but they're in the miscellaneous.
Yes. So this was incorrectly placed in the miscellaneous section of the agenda, however, it is a public hearing. When we did send out notices, we did send out notices to the surrounding property owners for this one.
I believe so, as long as council, as long as P and D takes action.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we had an agenda item that was on miscellaneous that should have been on the public hearing section. Again, that's probably a legal position, but I, I would feel confident is from all my years doing it, that you're not doing anything wrong by moving it off because for two reasons. One, it was advertised as a public hearing. And two, whether it's on miscellaneous or on consent, it's still partly.
This is just our agenda.
Yeah, it's still on the agenda. But you would have to vote to take it off to bring it to a public hearing.
Which one is that?
We've got three of them.
There are three that actually say.
Okay, hang on.
Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Yeah, twelve, thirteen.
And fourteen.
Is it this one?
It was actually three. Okay, so it was number sixteen, 2025-16P. Thirty-six and thirty-seven. Those three were added to the miscellaneous, or however, they were supposed to be open public hearing.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion that we re, that we move case files number 2025-16P, 2025-35P, and 2025-37P off of the miscellaneous agenda to the open meeting?
Yeah, thirty-six P.
Thirty-six, thirty-six P, thirty-seven P.
So move.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're now go, going back into public hearing, and we're going to start with case file number 2025-16P. This is a public hearing to consider approval of a request by S.W. Howell, Inc. for the proposed replat of Park Ranch Church Edition, second filing, subdivision 12.86 acres, being a replat of all of Lot 1 and 2, Lot 1, Park Ranch Church Edition, and a 5.86 acre tract that is located in Section 16, Block 41, T2S. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. The applicant and owner, Ben Ford, with a consultant, S.W. Howell Incorporated, are seeking to plot to combine three lots into two for related uses of an existing church. We sent out notices and received no objections. Staff recommends approval of the replat of Park Ranch Church Edition, second filing, subject to condition A through G. We're now open for questions.
Are there any questions? I did have one question. Out of the conditions, the city's requesting a hike and bike trail for an easement. Is that a long gun? The Tesco easement? Seems like an odd request because it's going to run from Billy Hacks Highway to Fodry Road, Fodry Road to where the heck east.
So, so what, yeah, we're, since we've been asked, we'll, we'll, we'll share that. The city of Odessa has applied for a, a tech stock grant for the Wildcatter Trail. This is a really big deal for the city. We're hoping to, to get it. It's past preliminary, so we're, we're hoping to get a positive answer in June. So we want it, in order to get that trail to continue, it's going to go across that Encore easement, and the Encore easement right now just says, I believe, electrical easement or utility easement, so the public can't access it for the purposes of a trail. So by putting that comment in, we're essentially, Joe could answer more than me, but we're essentially saying that now it can be used for public access vis a vis a trail in the future.
But to answer your question, Mr. Peacock, it should read Billy Hacks to Bastrop.
Okay.
So that's a.
All right, okay.
That, if we correct that to Bastrop, we'll give over you.
Makes sense.
And just for a correction, we received four objections.
Were there any approvals?
We sent out ninety-six and received one approval, two returns, four objections.
We'll take a few minutes to review those objections.
Go on slowly.
That's right. They're not paying us by the hour anymore?
That's right.
I would note that on, on the objections, there were comments to the effect that it would increase the traffic, cause maybe some congestion. There was one comment about making rezoning easier, which I'm not sure is, is, is relevant, but it does bring up a question. On the aerial map that we were provided, there's, is a portion of the property described with, or imprinted with FD, Future Development? Is that the 5.86 acres that is included in this?
So this one, give me a second, I have to look at the map, just a minute. Okay, so yes, it is the five point, the acre, 5.86 acres that is to the north. That is what was Future Development at the time. However, this church owns all of that property. They have requested to combine it. There is a small portion over to the, the east, which is a drill site, so they have chose to leave it as a lot to, to only remain as a drill site.
So is the FD part of the drill site?
No.
And there was a comment about the lot numbers, Lot Number Two.
So whenever you replat, you have to, you have to proceed with the numbering of the platt. The current numbers would not, let me see here, just a second.
So what's going to end up being Lot Two?
I'm sorry?
Which one's going to be Lot Two?
Lot Two would be, just a second. Lot Two would be the drill site area.
Okay. But on our proposed platt, I don't see a Lot Two, so that will be Lot Two.
It is on the, on the platt, it is towards the northeast of Lot One.
Oh, okay, that, that's going to be a very odd. All right, so that means it doesn't. All right, you commented Lot Two does not have sufficient access to City Right Line, that's because it's that odd shape. So what, what happens now?
Lot Two is a panhandle lot. It only, it extends to Bastrop, but it only has 12 foot on Bastrop, so it, it does not have sufficient access. It's basically landlocked, that 12 foot would not provide sufficient access to a drill site. You can't get drill equipment down 12-foot access.
Right, okay.
So.
All right.
I have a solution, but I think it needs to be addressed by the consultant.
And that would be addressed, and if it's approved, this would have to be shared before city council?
This one is a platt, so this one would not go through city council. It is just to platt the property. In the future, if they were to remove the drill site, it would go back to the zoning that it is surrounded by. However, this platt does not go to city council.
But by being a drill site that is not active, it's just designated as a drill site, nothing's going on there?
Um, it is an active drill site. It was recommended to the, to the consultant that it go, that there be an access to that Lot Two.
And so that would be, if you kept this platt, then that would have to be by a specific easement.
I'm sorry?
It, so if you, if you kept the design of this platt, that access would have to be done by a specific written easement?
Correct, yes.
How would they access?
Well, yeah, I can't.
I don't understand how they would access.
Yeah, I don't understand either.
How would you access them?
How can we approve a platt where we're denying access to a property that had legal access before?
Just depending what kind of rig you'd drug in there would depend how much room they would need.
Who's wanting this?
Yeah, what's, what are we trying, what is, what is the end goal here with this whole?
Who's wanting this?
The motivation?
Is it for the church? The church is wanting to expand and?
Okay. I, I would, I would note that, that this is a public hearing, and I think we've kind of run through the gamut with the staff, so at this point, I would ask if there's anyone in the public to come forward and?
If I may, as the consultant representative or SW Howell, my name is Wade Howell. The entire point on this actually is, originally, the church didn't want to do it in multiple lots, they wanted to do it in a single, and they wanted to rezonate all into one rezoning. The problem that has arisen is in where the drill site is listed versus where the drill site physically was. The smaller portion that's listed as a drill reserve was only an access portal. It was not even where the drill reserve was. The drill reserve is on the northern part that was listed as future development. So somewhere, it had been rezoned, and no one has any access of any drill release. And so we're hung up on, we don't have a drill release because they bought it as it was already zoned, and never was a mention of a drill release that needed to exist for them. It wasn't until we got this. So the second lot exists just because that is the parcel deeded piece that is specifically required as drill site. So that's why they created that second parcel. And then the, it has gotten this far because the city wants the hike and bike trail to go through the Encore, but the landowner is not necessarily in agreeance of that if they can't get rezoned and redone on something that they didn't have any access to. So we're kind of in a stalemate situation is what has happened. Any questions?
Yeah, you're, if I'm following you, the, the drill site, the FD was rezoned at some point?
At some point, the part where the drill site was, was the FD location. And they plugged that years ago, and we have record on the plugging, but we, no one finds any record on the drill release, even though it was rezoned into future development at some point.
Rezoned from drill site?
Yes, sir. The drill release part is the Lot Two on this proposal is the only part that still shows drill release on it, but it never had a drill site on it. It was just part of the access parcel to the drill site.
That's the Parks family?
Yes, sir.
At some point, it had that.
That and the Headleys, I believe it was the Headley units in there when they changed out. And so it would have probably been released through the Headleys, or they just assumed it in the entire field, because again, it was plugged, I want to say twenty-twelve or something like that, before the church actually went in there.
All right, very helpful.
Can we pull this item, table it, ask them to table it?
Absolutely.
And we can try to see if we can find a little bit more?
Sure.
Research and have a little bit more conversation.
Absolutely, we'd, we'd love to have that. Yeah, we'd love to, thank you.
Can we ask that request from you guys?
Yes, let me see, is there anyone else in the audience, because this is public hearing, that would like to speak in favor of and opposition? Yes, sir, if you'd come forward and give us your name?
Yes, sir, I just wanted more information on what was going to be built right there, because like we were saying earlier, we're already congested as it is. The traffic is bad, and we just, we're just, you know, I just don't want apartment complexes being built there. You know, that's one of my concerns. We're already jammed as it is, it's already pretty, pretty packed there.
What was your name, Charlie?
My name is Eric Galdon.
And your concern is congestion, traffic, more people?
And what's being built there?
Yeah, what's being, what's being built there?
I can address that question. So what's, nothing is going to be built on that property that's going to serve as parking lot for the church?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That's all I had, I just wanted more transparency.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of and opposition, or confuse us even more? Okay, with that, I think we're ready to close the public portion. I'll turn to the commission, see if anybody's got some ideas, a discussion, or a motion of some kind.
I'm moved we table this.
Have a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, beat that one down. Case file number twenty-two-five dash thirty-six P, are we ready for that now?
Sure.
All right, this is a public hearing to consider approval of the request by Newton Engineering PC for the proposed replat of Lots Five and Six, Block Six, Tentacle Estates, second filing, located in Section Twenty, Block Forty-One, T-two S, TDP Railway Company Survey, generally located on the south side of Dennis Lane. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. We are asking for this case file to be withdrawn. There is a drill site at this location, and we have, we tried to bring this to Planning and Zoning Commission, thinking that we'd probably get that done prior to this. However, we, we, due to time constraints, we weren't able to. So we're asking to have this case withdrawn. The consultant has requested this as well, and we will be bringing this back once the zone, the drill set has been released.
Okay, and the applicant is on board with that?
Yes, sir. We have confirmation from them. He has emailed us his withdrawal request.
Okay, I think we're still in the public hearing, so is there anyone in the audience that, that has a comment about this file at this time? Favor of, opposition to? Are there any questions of staff? I mean, have any issues?
The spirit is not getting anywhere very quickly.
All right, then, I'm going to close the public portion, turn to the commission, and there's been a suggestion that this matter be withdrawn at this time. Is there a motion that we approve or withdraw?
Make a motion, we withdraw case file twenty-five dash thirty-six P.
A motion in a quick second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, third filing, under the reopen of the public hearings, case file number twenty-two-five dash thirty-seven P, public hearing to consider approval of the request of SW Howell, Inc., for the proposed replat of Lot Four in the south ten feet of Lot Five, Lot Nine, Normandy Heights, subject to condition A. Property is generally located east side of Adams Avenue. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, City of Odessa Community Development with consultant SW Howell Incorporated, is seeking to replat to create one lot for ownership purposes. This replat request has been routed to respective departments and received no objections, and therefore, the planning staff does recommend approval of replat of Lot Four and the south ten feet of Lot Five, Block Nine, Normandy Heights, subject to condition A. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions? All right, no question of staff, then I will turn to the public. Is there anyone here that has anything they'd like to say about this matter at this time? Please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close public discussion on case file number twenty-two-five dash thirty-seven P. Turn to the commission. Are there any questions or issues, or discussion, or a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, got a motion?
We approve, okay.
Got a motion for approval?
Second.
Another second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Right now, somebody tell me where we are.
Miscellaneous.
All right, back to miscellaneous.
Number seven.
We just did thirteen.
Number seven. Case file twenty-two-five dash thirty-one P. This is approval of the proposed, proposed preliminary platt, Shiloh Eleventh, Shiloh Square Eleventh filing, being seven point seven three acres, located in Section Three, Block Forty-One, T-two S. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, Wiley and Fredna Brown Family Partnership LTD with consultant LCA, is seeking to create three lots for retail development. This platt request has been routed internally and received no objections from departments, and therefore, the planning staff does recommend approval of this preliminary platt of Shiloh Square Eleventh filing, subject to conditions A through H. We are now open for questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions? I have, just to note that, like in, in our disco, description of this case file, it just refers to Ector County, but this one is in both counties, isn't it?
Yeah.
Both after, I don't think it makes a difference since that's in, it's descriptive.
Right, so this, this is City of Odessa, Ector County, Texas.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir?
Any questions of staff? All right, this is not a public hearing, so turn to the commission.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Going on now, case file, this is number eight on the agenda, if anybody's keeping score. Case number twenty-two-five dash thirty-two P. This is a proposed preliminary platt of Shiloh Square Tenth filing, being eighteen point eight two acres of land, in Sections Three and Four, Block Forty-One, T, TDP Railway Company Survey, in the City of Odessa, Ector County, generally located on the north side of East Fifty-Sixth Street. Yes, sir?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, Wiley and Fredna Brown Family Partnership LTD, with consultant LCA, is seeking to platt to create twelve lots for ownership purposes. This platt request has been routed to respective city departments and received no objections, and therefore, the planning staff does recommend approval of the preliminary platt of Shiloh Square Tenth filing, subject to conditions A through G. We are now open for questions. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions of staff? If there are no questions, then I'll ask the commission for a motion of some kind.
Some move.
Does he have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, two seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Case file passes. All right, here we go. Case file number twenty-two-five dash thirty-three P. This property is in the ETJ. This is a proposed preliminary platt of Bishop Subdivision, zero point eight seven three acres of land in Section Fourteen, Block Forty-three, T-two S, TDP Railway Company Survey. Property is located on the west side of North Spiro Avenue and three hundred feet south of West Blair. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. The applicant and owner, Martin Bishop, with consultant SW Howell Incorporated, are seeking to platt to create one lot for residential development. This request has been routed to all respective departments for internal review, and we have received zero objections. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary platt of Bishop Subdivision, subject to condition A. We're now open for questions.
Looks like we got an easy one, folks. Any questions, staff? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Have a motion for approval?
Second.
Have we got a quick second over here? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, motion carries. All right, case file number twenty-two-five dash thirty-four P. Another property in the ETJ. This involves a preliminary platt with Canaro subdivision, subdivision two point oh acres in Section Twenty-seven, Block Forty-three, T-two S, TDP Railway Company Survey. Property is located on the north side of Tenth Street. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. The applicant and owner, Oscar and Salma Camaro, with consultant SW Howell Incorporated, are seeking to platt to create two lots for residential development. This request has been routed to all respective departments for internal review, and we have received no objections. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary platt of Camaro subdivision, subject to condition A through B.
Any questions of staff? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
Have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes. We're now on case file at eleven, I think. Count number eleven, case file number twenty-two-five dash thirty-five P, continuing with property in the ETJ. This involves a proposed preliminary platt of Hall of Fame addition, being six point six seven acres of land located in Section Forty-two, Block Forty-three, T-two S, TDP Railway Company Survey. Property is located on the north side of West Driver's Hall of Fame.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. The applicant and owner, Juan P. Moreno, Jr., with consultant Maverick, are seeking to platt to create two lots for residential development. This request has been routed to all respective departments for internal review. We have received zero objections. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary platt of Hall of Fame addition, subject to condition A. We're now open for questions.
Any questions? If there are no questions?
Move for approval.
I'll second.
Now, staff has, staff has a question or a comment?
Yeah, my question is, are we approving a preliminary platt or a final platt?
It says preliminary.
It says preliminary.
Okay, because the condition says approval final, so I just want to make sure we were doing it right.
When they do submit the final Mylar, we just need it, if you notice, on one of our, I don't think it was on that one, but one of the plats that they submitted, they had a building, and actually, it wasn't a building. It was a slab, I think. So we wanted to clear that up, that for the final Mylar, they needed to not have any type of drawing except for the lot itself.
I think I'm clear.
So the, the final platt won't have that?
Correct, that's what we were requesting.
Thank you.
Okay. So do we have a motion for approval?
Make a motion, we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, case file number twenty-two-five dash thirty-eight P. Property in the Ector County jurisdiction. This involves a replat of the east one hundred fifty point two four feet of Lot Eighteen, Block Five, three eighty-five Ranch Estate, second filing. That's a one acre tract of land, Section Twenty-one, Block Forty-two, T-three S, TDP Railway Company Survey. Property is located on the east side of Borman Street. Yes, sir?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, Manuela Sanchez Enriquez, with consultant SW Howell Incorporated, is seeking to replat to create one lot for ownership purposes. This replat request was routed through respective departments and received no objections from said departments, and therefore, the planning staff does recommend approval of replat of east one hundred fifty point twenty-four feet of Lot Eighteen, Block Five, three hundred and eighty-five Ranch Estate, second filing, subject to conditions A through C. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
These folks already own this property, and the request to replat is just to get it, get it its own lot and block number, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And that's something kind of, kind of new?
I think that's a request from the county, but yes, they are trying to replat to just provide with a block and lot number.
All right, so rather than having a partial legal description of meets and bounds and?
Correct.
And footage, they want a, a lot and block definition for the property?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, staff? Anybody have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Case file number twenty-two-five dash thirty-nine P. Property in the ETJ. Motion approving with staff's recommended conditions, Aguilar subdivision, replat of a zero point five six seven acre tract out of the east half and the west half of Lot One, Block Four, Knox Village Ranchettes, Phase Three, in Section Thirty-one, Block Forty-three, T-two S, TDP Railway Company Survey. Property is located on the north side of West Citation Drive. Yes, sir?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, City of Odessa Community Development with consultant SW Howell Incorporated, The applicant and owner, Sarahhi Rodriguez, with consultant SW Howell Incorporated, is seeking to replat to create one lot for ownership purposes. This replat request has been routed to respective city departments and received no objections, and therefore, the planning staff does recommend approval of this replat, Aguilar subdivision, subject to conditions A through C. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Condition B, lot's too small to subdivide without public water, county has a variance?
Yes, sir.
Does that mean that it's, they have to apply for variance, or is only, the variance is only?
So, because it's out in the county, they have to submit a variance to the county because of the size of the lot. They're, according to the developer, they've already, they're already submitting, they've already submitted the request for the variance, they just need to go to county commission.
So, if we approve this, the final, it won't be finally platted until that variance is in place?
Correct. Yes, we're holding them to that. They would have to provide a copy of that before they can report.
So, if I'm doing title work on it?
I'm sorry?
If I'm, as an examining attorney for an abstract company, this is not going to be filed record until that variance?
Correct, yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Anybody got any motions left in them?
So moved.
Have a motion for approval?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're down to case file number 2025-40P, continuing in the ETJ. This involves replat of Lot Twenty-Five, Block Ten, 385 Estates, 385 Ranch Estates West, located in Section Seventeen, Block Forty-Two, T3S, TDP Railway Company Survey, property is generally located on the south side of Wagon Wheel Road.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, Diamond Vision Investment Company, LLC, with consultant Newton Engineering PC, is seeking to replat to create two lots for ownership purposes. This replat request was routed to respective city departments, received no objections, and therefore, the planning staff does recommend approval of replat of Lot Twenty-Five, Block Ten, 385 Ranch Estates West, subject to conditions A through C. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Anybody have questions? If there are no questions of staff, I'll ask if there are any motions or?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, approve in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody got a motion about a journey?
I motion me a journey.
All right, everybody agree?
Yeah.
We all agree.
Aye.
We're done.